Evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call this meeting the Towns Mills River Planning Board to order. You will please stand and join me as your president. At this time, if there are adjustments or additions to tonight's agenda, if you have one.
Uh, yes, uh, we do request, uh, if it's of course pleasure that we switch new business and old business. Um, just so we can hear the resuming matter before going back into the food.
Does that require voting?
All the part or part of the persuasion.
The motion.
I'll make a motion.
We'll have a motion to switch the order because this is excellent. Let's say that I'm a starter foster all of anger.
Uh.
And.
Bye.
Can you post? We will make that switch. Anything addition?
No, ma'am.
Right, you all received an electronic copy of our meeting. The minutes of our meeting from October fourth, we have chances to live over there. For those, are there any changes or modifications? And if not, as an interview question to agree with us.
Then.
A second. All in favor?
Uh.
Um. You both. Minutes have been approved unanimously. We have any public comments?
I've received none, um.
Oh, I'm presuming this is related to.
Yeah, um, are you, are you Mr. Crook? Yes, okay, so if you've signed up, I'll just have you go up during uh your item question.
Sure.
Okay. Nothing else additional.
Okay, so at this time, we are going to um address our new business first. So that would be the request for resuming. Item R dash twenty-two dash oh two. And I'm gonna let Mr. Melo check to give some reason we have.
Great, uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, so this was a recent rezoning application that came in um submitted by Joel Crook, who's the owner of the subject property and joining us tonight. Um, the application requests to rezone uh the subject property. Um, which there's no address assigned currently from Mills River Low Density Residential or the MR thirty district, the Mills River Neighborhood Commercial, but MR NC district. So the property is about two point one three acres. This was subdivided off the adjacent parent parcel, which is the anointed word church property at twenty-two, twenty-three Butler Bridge Road. Uh, that was the subject of resuming case part twenty-one on one. Uh, a request to rezone from MR thirty to general business, and that was denied by council on May twenty-seventh of last year. Um, but since over a year has elapsed and since the property's uh been subdivided and has a new pin number, um, there's no issue with it being uh heard by the planning board and continuing through the regular process. Um, so a little background on the districts of the MR thirty district, uh zoning district is just meant to be a a client neighborhood of single-family homes residential primarily in nature. Neighborhood commercial is a transitional zoning district, um, so it's meant to provide for compatible residential commercial, commercial uses, which protect them against the world characteristic of the town. Um, and for the board members, the the full ordinance description of those zoning districts and the permitted uses. Both permitted by right via minor special use permit and major special use permit is included in your package. I am gonna switch the views so I can go through some of the documents here while I'm going through this. Um. So again, the proposed district is neighborhood commercial. Uh, with all rezoning decisions, again, it's important to consider all possible uses of the proposed zoning district, not one particular use. And uh not to single out the proposed use of the property owner, developer, or applicant. Um, that's considered contract zoning, which is illegal in the state of North Carolina, so the focus tonight should really be on. The proposed zoning of the surrounding uh land uses and zoning districts and a future land use map as part of the comprehensive plan. Um, all right, now I am gonna switch to the map because we're gonna talk about adjacent parcels here, so bear with me a second. Okay, go. So. Up on the screen here and the public should be able to view this as well, we have the current zoning map. So the parcels adjacent to the property on the south side of Butler Bridge Road are all zone MR thirty, that's that tan colored uh on the map. Um, that's the low-density residential one. The parcels across the street or north of Butler Bridge Road. Are all zone neighborhood commercial, which again is uh the same district that's being requested tonight. Uh, one property I wanted to call out was the daycare center at twenty-one fifteen Butler Brick Roads. With all pointing to with my mouse here, this little triangle. Um, that was an MR thirty zone property, but was rezoned. The neighborhood commercial um by council. With the zoning map on M O three O six, and that was approved on February eighth, two thousand and seven. So again, just wanted to highlight that um a similar request um has been approved by council before. Um, this rezoning request is consistent, um, let me go forward here. Here's a proposed zoning map, so again. This parcel um changing to neighborhood commercial. And even though there is a roadway here, um, this is considered an extension of the existing district across the way. So again, although we will talk about um. Statements of reasonableness to protect from a spot zoning challenge, um, that's highly likely in this case because it is adjacent to the neighborhood commercial district. It's it's not a. Uh, a new zoning district that sits by itself on. And then going through the future land use map, so. This is consistent with the making Mills River Comprehensive Plan and the future land use map, um, so it designates this as the next residential district category. And this land use category, if we look at this chart here. Um, identifies desirable future land uses in this district as single-family residential, schools, duplexes, parks, and public space. And also identifies acceptable future land uses as retail restaurants, office, institutional civic community uses, et cetera. Um, mo- most of those uses are in alignment with what's permitted in the neighborhood commercial district, so staff does feel that's in alignment with the future land use map and the comprehensive plan. Um. Notably, the properties on the north side of Butler Bridge Road, um. That are zone neighborhood commercial in the current zoning map. Are all designated as the community center land use category for future land uses. And that's a higher intensity uh land use category for the future. Uh, that includes uh desirable uses like retail restaurants, offices, duplexes, townhomes, apartment schools. Parks and public space, civic and community, et cetera. Um, so again, that's just the review of the conference of planning and future land use map concerning this request. Um. Again, even though I I think it's unlikely because we are singling out a specific parcel and resuming it differently from a lot of the adjacent parcels. It's always smart to um protect the town from a spot zoning challenge. Um, and again, spot zoning is legal as long as it's it's supported by a reasonable basis, so. Uh, just taking note of some of these things um for your discussion tonight because it should be reflected in the the meeting record. So when considering a potential spot zone, the planning board should consider the following factors in the reasonableness. Size and physical attributes of the site. Compatibility with the existing comprehensive land use plan. Benefits and detriments to the landowner, the neighbors, and the community. The relationship between the proposed uses and the current uses of adjacent properties. Why the resuming is in the public interest and any change. Conditions warranting resuming. Um, that concludes the majority of my staff report. Staff uh is recommending approval of this. Request on both because it's consistent with the future land use map. And um additional objectives and policies on the comprehensive plan. Which are highlighted in the planning board consistency statement here. Um, I'm happy to take any questions. I know the app that's here. Um, if it's the board's pleasure, he can benefit and see. Well, open up the floor.
Um, does anyone have any specific questions, Michael, or for meeting? Landowner.
I do, Michael.
Okay.
Sorry. Michael, I I might be missing, there's a lot of papers to turn through while you're talking. On the land use by category, you have five things listed there, community crossroads down through. New chart. Where where was the 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 same chart and same information for neighborhood commercial? Or is it back in the body of your?
So it's it's a little different. So the land uses by category chart is only for future land use districts as it relates to the future land use map. It does not relate to current zoning districts.
So was there, was there a what would be allowed under neighborhood commercial? Stood in here in one spot, I know we're not.
Yes.
About what individuals trying to do, but what could she?
That's attachment D.
Okay.
And attachment C has the current MR thirty low density residential uses.
Yes, I was flipping through a lot of paper while you were talking.
But fine.
As long as it's here, that's all, that's gonna be the question I wanna fuck out. I don't have a note. But.
Would you have a question? Um. So my thoughts, and maybe just go to enter some conversation, because they're awfully quiet tonight, um. Just, just looking at. The diagram that you see, the map of where this lot is. And while it is a small purchase, just over two acres, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And one of the things that we have to consider is. We don't even know what it's proposed to be used for, and that's kind of irrelevant. We have to consider what it might. Be used for, what it can potentially be used for at any point in the future. Um, when I look at. The categories, there are a lot of things that I think would be appropriate in that particular location, um, I think. You know, parks would be great. Trails would be great, again, another daycare would be great, schools would be great. Um, however, I think it would be a really smaller location for retail or. Restaurants simply because of the location on that road. The traffic that it might generate in those curves on that road. Uh, so two lane road. And yes, someone may say, oh, that land is so small, and that will never happen, but. I've learned to never say never. Um, and to just think about, well, you might think no, but the potential is there. Um, so that gives me some caution.
And just, just to be clear, um. Restaurants is not a permitted use by right in neighborhood commercials, primarily retail businesses and offices, uh, in addition to single-family. You could do a restaurant, but uh with a minor special use permit.
Number one, you lost.
Thinking it through, is, are you going to give? The applicants not needing to talk to us?
If you have questions.
I don't know that I have questions, but I don't, I might hear some. That might give me a question as I'm looking through this.
I mean, you obviously came here to to. Address this. Are there some particular things you would like for us to be aware of?
Oh, I mean, what it's, yeah, I mean, really what it's all about, the reason that I went, I came back in for zoning. Was because it's just fly from there, and so for us. Uh, the only thing that I missed, but then it's putting an office there. Um, because we have engineers and staff, and we do marketing, and so that's all that. They were new out there, and so I thought it was a nice location for an office. And um, so, so that's my thing. Um, but that's all we need, it's simply gonna be an office for marketing and engineering. And because we fly in and out, we have to work, work constantly. So I needed, it makes a convenient location. And um. And we do nice offices. So. We have the probably, that's one of the things. So we could.
Could I?
No, yes, we didn't. We stay office.
I don't know, the protection could be, or the.
No, we're marketing, so we do sales, we, we sell lightning protection, the, the surge. Backup generators. Um, and we do a lot of engineering consulting, we travel testing this. And so it's primarily engineers that are in that office, and then the small marketing staff, this model. And this, that's what, are you already? Yes, you are, you are. And I'm. Yes. We've got, um, annoyed which. The concerns.
Uh, I was curious earlier on in this process before I was a member of the board, what was going on. Full disclosure, I did speak with an actor story about the property that's been purchased to test the clients that's left in the rest of it. He let me just be here, he kinda had to bring the gift. I'm just curious, I'm just throwing that out there, so it's now, just curious, um, when you would start. Developing or improving, maybe adding improvements. Is that short term, I mean?
Yeah, it would be should have tried it, but we just, we would probably do that. Right now, we just. Property is just that because, you know, we came in for the zoning, you know, the business zoning prior to. And then what we were gonna do is actually run the distribution facility over there, so then contractor traders, they still leave that over there, but. Like I said, the convenience of it, um, you know, and of course, I considered at that point, we didn't get the zoning, maybe it just solid or, you know, just a lot of, you know, but. The thing is, as I said, plus the airport, i- it's convenient and um I ca- I'm flying constantly and such that I work from the. Uh, flying in and out constantly.
Just want to draw again, you can't make any decision based on exactly what you're gonna do, but can't help but be curious, same.
No, that's, that's, that's what we, that's, that's what we'll do, then I have, um. I have kids my own, we're some takeover after I, after running a new. Few years, but that's the business, and that's really been the family business. Uh, since, um. We've, I've been doing this since nineteen eighty-two. And we lived in the house with, you know, for, in our kids. All, I'm in school there, which is a K through twelve. Even graduated there with the adversities and law schools, and then we moved actually to Asheville, well, full-time, to be honest. And the reason for us to relocate is because the travel got me so extensive. For me.
But would you hold a pretty good inventory there on site or? Distribution come out of there as well? Use the traffic.
Yeah, you know, that really what it is, is what. For us, it's like, it's like a lot of companies nowadays, because it's internet-based. And uh we have our own servers and stuff like that, and then what, the way that those sales goes, we make ourselves, and then it'd be UPS or FedEx, like everybody else that comes through. And that's the ways that have very ship, it wouldn't be a tractor trailer bringing in.
And Michael, without reading through all this, I'm just asking for warehouse space, you know, if there's gonna be high dollars, if there's gonna be big things like that, if that's. Again, not, not in any way, saying like now his business, just curious if under allow, that's.
Warehousing and distribution is is not a permitted use in the neighborhood.
Right. Right, so it'll go all the, so I'm gonna have to, that's not something you would intend to try. And that.
You said you live in Asheville, right? Yes, I live in. Didn't, is this something like your home office? Yes.
And you're already here.
You know, because to, you know. It doesn't work for you, you know, what kind of. Like public safety building in Morvar, and we've done all nine one one centers. And emergency call centers, yeah, I've worked for Morvar for twenty-something years, we did emergency services, training, towns, a lot of towns. So we've just been around for a long time, so it didn't matter to me, I mean. It was, you know, I like me close to Morvar, and then we put the airport in Asheville. And this is where we've been for so many years, or right here. That's where I'm, I'm supposed to come out of.
If I could, uh. Step in for a second, Mr. Good, thanks for coming, I think, you know, it's good to see you, I think you'll. Definitely put a lot of thought into what we put in here regardless of what it is. Mr. Malcheck, I would like to ask a couple of things. About some of the things that would be permitted, rather than. Um, I'm sure an office, an office would be great. Love to have you, you know, permitted use, um. But rather than us getting. Tied up in a particular use and all that stuff. I like to go through a couple of things that. Just to get an idea of what could be considered a retail business or service located conducted within a closed building, that would be the type thing that. Um. Would, of course, it'd have to fit on the property. But it would be something where, um. You go and buy things like a, a rent hall store or something, or. Trying to think what kind of. Businesses that would be, and if that would be appropriate, and then a retail business making products sold at retail on the premises. Something like that. I know there's a knife company nearby, Microtech. And to me, that seemed like they're a business that makes the product and sell it there. Um. And I'm sure you can buy online, um. Something like that, you know, would that be appropriate here? Um. Public utilities, public facility, public buildings, that I'm sure would be, would be fine. The question is, the retail businesses. What, and my, my question is, what type that number one, what would? What would define that? Because. You know, and, and once we make the zoning step, that could do it, not saying it's going to. Not saying it's going to at all.
Well, no, I understand, I mean, for us, honestly, we got no foot traffic.
Sure.
And at all, certainly, it's, we're on, we're marketing and, and it's due.
And, um. Yet. In places I'm familiar with where we had conditional zoning, not saying that we would ever want it here, but. That would be where is zone conditionally in modern neighborhood commercial for office, and that's like you ever do there without going back really more. So we don't have that, we have to be careful and make sure that any of these uses is compatible, not saying that there would ever be there. Just make sure that we as a board have a comfort level. That those uses would be compatible. At some future date possibly, if so, then, then I, um.
Because once the zoning is.
Once the zoning's there.
And, you know, whatever happens to, um. Your business, it runs you.
It's so successful that you say, wow.
You about grew, you built, or whatever, if someone else could come there and do any of these other things.
There would be no encircuses on that property. In the future, so the encircuses or whatever the regulation will be based, these lists, this list right here. So would there be a retail business or service? That. Wouldn't be appropriate there, we need to think about that, would there be? Uh, retail business making products sold primarily retail there that would be. Cause. Yeah, that, that could start to go there at some point.
If, if I may kind of read the definition, the ordinance definition of retail business and retail services. So retail business includes establishments engaged in selling merchandise directly to residential business or institutional customers and rendering services incidental to the sale of those goods. The establishment is usually a face of business which is engaged in activities to attract the general public to buy. Processing incidental or subordinate selling often is conducted by the retail business. Buying of goods for resale to customers on site is a characteristic of a retail paid establishment that particularly distinguishes them from wholesale operations. Dust beer production in agricultural and extracted investments. Specifically excluded are adult establishments. That's retail businesses. Retail services. This is the definition, includes establishments primarily engaged in providing a wide variety of services for individuals, business, and government establishments and other organizations. Includes establishments providing personal business, repair, health. Legal, engineering, and other professional services. Membership organizations and other miscellaneous services, specifically excluded as adult establishments. Um, they, they, they are broad, um, but again, in, in. Previous uh conversations with the applicant before applying and in discussing, um. And, and I know it's not a concern, consideration tonight, but in discussing his proposed use. Um, my interpretation was it does that uh within retail service slash service.
Yes, engineering. It's not.
And again, um. This is meant to be a transitional district, you know, between the sole single-family residential and between the higher intensity commercial districts. Um, so that's why, you know, it's even talked about, uh, retail business are servicing enclosed building, because again, you don't. Want the, the disturbance of potential nuisances of um retail or, or traffic in an outdoor setting that could be carried to nearby residences, so.
Carla, would that be?
Uh, I, I would not consider uh like an, an auto sales establishment, uh, that, that, as I believe is permitted. I, I'd have to check, but I believe it's permitted by right in general business, and, and that would be the district it would follow.
Just thinking of an out, outdoor retail. That would be. Maybe travel park, lot, dust, and what is the reason? May not really be compatible, you guys, emotional picture of. But. The services to me, that. That doesn't seem to be. Incompatible. And the, the retail business. Of that type does not seem to be incompatible. It's here then. So, nice, you started out, is there?
Well, I understand, it wouldn't be a metal building, it would, you know. Neither, I mean, you know, you're very bright, this would be one of them, it's fact, you're on concrete, and it would look more like a residential. Um, building than anything else, and that, and while we would have the apartment, it would be, it would be concrete apartment, I mean. Um, building than anything else and that, and, um, well, we would have the apartment would be, would be concrete apartment, I mean, we don't lose it.
And, and I'm not opposed to. I'm not opposed to earnest pavers, allow the water go through them and, and things like that, water feature, that's, that's all good. Um, I just want to make sure, and certainly nothing against you, it's just once that zoning is there, we got to be. Comfortable that these particular uses fit. With the surrounding property that's not so, there is no greater advantage on it. And. It sounds like the businesses that could go here. Aren't that drastic? And not like you're not gonna get. Um, uh, uh, big box or whatever. I use A for emphasis, A for children listening and the teachers listening. I don't use A. So. It's not the same sentence we would have done.
And again, it should not be a consideration tonight, um, but, uh. The, this road Butler Bridge does trigger the town's corridor overlay district architectural requirements, so. Any building that's installed, you know, has to meet the, uh, natural requirement, uh, natural materials requirements for the building. And then again, like any, you know, commercial site thing would be, you know, carving landscaping, zoning buffers, all, all that's included in, in a standard. Commercial site then, but new, which would be part of any develop in the.
And no public comment? As you know, being.
No.
More from the public, this Westian concerns mouth to this.
No, but we also have not sent public notices because those are only mailed out and the public notice signs only erected on a site from the town council hearing. Cause that's the, the form of public hearing that's advertised, um, and what notices sent around, um, for the planning board. Meeting and recommendation, um, we, we have not done that public notice outreach yet.
Is that Glen Marlowe directly behind me?
It is the track for.
Track, yes. Currently residential, but I, to the west, southwest there, that's it.
Yeah, let me, I'll pull up. Scroll, but I'll pull up the GIS map I included, um. Yeah, I passed this earlier, but, but this is the survey provided by the app and. Again, showing the, uh, the subject property has been subdivided from the annoying work church property. And then here's your aerial view, if you will, so. Uh, correct, behind it is Glen Marlowe, one of their fields is back there, but their property extends all the way up and around. Uh, the church is the neighbor to the east, uh, there's a residential property to the west. And then there's a small strip of land, um, that, that this, uh, southwest. Corner that is actually part of the legacy development project.
I think providing is, uh, degress there or at some point, do you normally do they have it all the way above the bridge?
No, it does not. It, it terminates at the corner of this property.
So the only reason I was asking is that's not gonna open up. Well, the next adjacent property is gonna what? You, and then the next adjacent and the next adjacent there. It kind of just naturally it's gonna end there because of that, the county property. And the developed property beyond that.
Are you, are you sorry, are you talking about the legacy or about a rezoning?
No, just in general, this parcel, uh, I think, well, this is proposed clearly within what's allowed here. The bigger question is just what could happen if he, if he's not there. But in general, if that were to be rezoned, the next property over behind there is the school. In other words, we're not just gonna start expanding. You know, beyond this parcel because it's already developed or, or county property. With a little concern and the, there's precedence kind of that set, the daycare. There you go. Uh, yeah, it's kind of landlocked. The church isn't going anywhere. The neighborhood off of, Val and View's not going anywhere. And, and the daycare's already been through this in oh seven, I believe you said. And even though the road is in between, you feel that somebody challenging a spot. Zoning is not really gonna go on.
I mean, I, I still recommend, uh, the board go through those reasonableness items and make sure they're discussed and reflected in public record. But because it is adjacent to an existing neighborhood, commercial district, zoning districts cross roadways, so actually when. A property is rezoned, we draw the zoning boundary out to the center line of the road.
Okay.
Um, so currently, you know, uh, this property just north of Butler Bridge Road is neighborhood commercial. So imagine the zoning boundary coming out to the center of Butler Bridge. If this were to be rezoned to neighborhood commercial, it would, uh, be continuous.
And this map shows right away, but it's good to.
Correct, for, for zoning boundary and district purposes.
I don't know if Sherri's gonna keep Mr. Princeton in there. He's awfully polite, not going anywhere. I think our bigger question is.
Well, you guys just shout out.
Any other discussion? The gentleman shows how we should. Move on this, um, tonight, of course, this is, again, this is. And John, tonight is here to recommend this approval, touring an approval of those plans, we can enable it, or we can recommend another.
Wondering if we should, um. Discuss these findings, um, statements of consistency or okay with it. I don't know if we're even voting on each one. Or even vote on any of them. But should we discuss them and see if this is compatible with that? Um, if there.
This is very in, sorry, attachment.
Attachment ones, is that right?
One, I cry, probably the last one. So very in. The very last one is attachment to each. Table. So Jeff, being new, is to the board, you're apparently new, is that, uh? What is this part of the process? Just to kind of checks and balance against the request?
I think so. I think we, you know, this is where we, we discuss it and see if it makes sense with these. Um, these findings, the statements of consistency, these findings as facts, I know this is more adjustments. Where we have to have separate kinds of facts, but, um. I think that, you know, if we, if we talk about these and feel like any of these uses. That could go here and I just lost my place. Retail business or service conducted retail business, becking products, other public utilities, if all these. That within this location, for any of these, then. We would prove if, if we say, oh no, we couldn't have some of the family loans, here comes those, you know, then. Well, I know that's, that's definitely wrong, I'm just saying that we found one of these uses that. We didn't feel like it fit there, then that may. Make this question, whether this is an approach or a zone, but. Looking at it, in my opinion, I think they all fit, so I'm not gonna, no. Um, I think they all fit. But would it, especially with zoning right across the street? But we're very young. So not much of a driver, but, um, you know, the forks, so. Just throwing it out there.
Well, I, I know one of the things that we, we got in our policy analysis. Um, to defend against the argument of spot zoning, you can is. Looking at some of the attributes, for example, the size of the property itself, you know, that's, it's not. Large enough to, to. Some of the uses that we think would be compatible with the nature of the, um. Res zoning in terms of public interest, we can stop Mr. Crick, as I stated that. When there's some employment opportunities coming, you know, I mean, this business, um. Just looking at some of those, those other things that are there, um, obviously there are benefits to the landowner. Um, being able to use how much these offices are, um. Probably the biggest one is that, looking at why I'm seeing the chart of it. It has to be compatible with a comprehensive landings, and when you look at the twenty forty. These are the plan just vision plan, it is, I think, compatible with that, so. That kind of negates the intention of spots.
Because of the community center changing.
Correct, and, and because when you look at all this chart, the things that are associated with that, the uses involved in. Anybody have any argument or, or in, in opposition to that?
I think there's a good argument to approve or to agree, what are the actual languages we're supposed to use?
You wanna make a motion then?
Oh, you don't want me to make a motion, I'm just doing this. Get some of the solidly both, honestly.
And just, just a reminder, in, in case you do make a motion, um. If the board so chooses, it's a recommendation for whatever you choose and that you're adopting the statement of consistency and just read the case number. If, if the statement of consistency is acceptable. Sorry, I said it again.
Sure, so all we have to say is make a motion then, that. We find that it. Needs the standard of consistency, R twenty two oh two, we don't need to read every single.
No, um, uh, but you would, you wanna make, in your motion, you actually want to adopt the statement of consistency. Again, if, if this draft version presented this. By my board.
From what I see, looking at. Maybe you're always really going to make comprehensive plan, I love northern land use, element six, infrastructure and economic development. And the three objectives, this zoning district appears to meet. Those objectives in this particular orientation. So I, I would be glad to make a motion, if y'all won't laugh too hard if I mess it up. That's what I get, I'm, I'm used to continue.
Or let me do it, cause nobody else wants to.
Nobody else wants to. Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval of this rezoning. Um, to, from, uh, MR thirty to MR Neighborhood Commercial. And find that and accept the statement of consistency, R twenty two zero two. And that this rezoning meets the objectives listed, um, in the statement of consistency. Second.
We have a second, uh, Mr. Abbott, any more discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
You propose. Okay. So we have recommended approval of those three zones, R dash two, this good two, two town households, you know, this. Next time, we are going to let you take your leave unless you want to stand down. Just some shift gears, you arrange your. Documents. And so now we are going to take up our old business, which is text the limit, T X T dash three, two, dash, three. Um, which is regarding the food truck and food park, evidence reviews, which we've handled. Our last meeting. Um, and one of the things that we have received in the interim are some proposed. Language changes that Mr. Maloche sent to us. So, um, I'll give him a minute just to kind of go over those and we can talk about anything else that we. Feel like needs to be later or want to figure out these purpose changes.
Thank you, um, I did want to just read this to the staff report one more time, was I, uh, was not able to get through all of it at the last meeting. Um, so again, the, the main purpose of this text alignment is changing the definition of a food park. Which is a higher standard of food truck, the commercial development, um, from two food trucks to three. So again, if this change were accepted, uh, well, currently only one food truck is allowed on any commercial property. If you have two food trucks, you're only allowed to have two in a food park, which has to be a standalone use. So the proposed change specifically for the food park definition is to move that number up to three. Which then would allow up to two food trucks on a commercial property in town with simpler zoning permit requirements. And then three food trucks or more would have to be permitted as a food park, which has to be a standalone commercial use. Um, usually on a, a vacant property, something with no established use, um. And again, uh, one thing I mentioned last time too is that, you know, when staff reviews these permits. The food trucks can't impair the functioning of the existing site, so in any food truck permit review. Staff is gonna make sure that, you know, ingress, egress is not blocked, the required parking. For any existing business is not taken, um, et cetera, et cetera, as part of the normal review. And if for some reason staff feels the site would be impaired or not function correctly with two food trucks, the permit would be denied. And again, there's a process for appeal, so if that can be dealt with, that, uh, was an incorrect judgment, they could appeal and that was lawyer's judgment. Um, I, I, I will say, I did not modify. The language, uh, in your ordinance attachment any more than last time. What I did look up, uh, in preparation for the meeting, because there was some discussion around this, is. Uh, if the planning board wants to have, uh, a specific definition about permanent restrooms or hand washing facilities. And so the easiest way I thought to do this, and again, this is completely, um, the board's pleasure, um. If you'd like to see this added, is basically to include the, the term permanent structure, uh, so right now. The ordinance says for a food park, you have to have permanent restrooms and hand washing facilities, but those aren't defined. And I, uh, believe I said in the last meeting, but, um, there was an instance, although it didn't pan out. Where staff was considering a restroom trailer. Uh, correctly anchored to the ground with skirting and everything that we would have considered that a permanent restroom facility. Um, if that's not something, you know, the planning board would like to see part of a food park. Then I would recommend including language, the, a permanent restroom, pass that via permanent structure. Which is very easily defined.
Ask a question out there. What if a permanent restroom had a requirement for city water? Or an approved water source? And a, either septic or sewer, so you wouldn't have holding tanks. Would that make it permanent, even if it are a relocatable building? Because you can't always go in and build concrete structure. May not make sense, if you want to try a food bar, but you've got water and sewer, who cares? Yeah. Then that, yeah, would, would be comparable with that being considered permanent structure versus. They some, uh, being deployed in military setting, having, um, holding tanks. And this, this not private. Water, you know, because the wire, you gotta make sure the wire is clean. And city water takes that off the table, city water, city sewer, force.
That, and again, it's, it's, the utilities aren't defined, but if the board chooses. To define a permanent restroom as a permanent structure, um. You know, that, that someone would have to go through the full building permit process, because it's a commercial site, they would need to be, you know, occupancy requirement, so. Um. Utility cookups, whether private or public, would be required, again, if that definition's included. Right now, is it? Right now, as it's written. That that's where the vagueness, it just says permanent restrooms and hand washing facilities. Doesn't even say if the hand washing facilities, you know, the hand washing facility is permanent, so what if you had a permanent restroom? In one of those little pump stations outside, you know, you pump the water with your foot. Uh.
So the word structure being added, does that trigger the building code?
Yeah.
That is that what you're looking for then?
Well, and again. I guess I'm trying to say it's not what I'm looking for, it it's like the. The board's.
That's what we need to.
Well, what what you desire a food park or what you envision a food park to be and the requirements associated with that. Um, and again, being newer here and having only dealt with this. A little bit here and there. So I think that's where some of the confusion was, you know, when I first started and when there was some confusion about one of the permits. Um. Is is again, the way the ordinance is written currently with the vagueness, i- it's not really clear. What a what a food park is, and I guess that's what I'm saying. If if the board would like to further define that and further define requirements. Specifically around the restroom, that then yes, I would recommend. You know, adding language that the a permanent restroom be a permanent structure. Not just a structure, but a permanent structure.
In in in.
And that would be stick though, which would trigger the building code.
And that triggers permanent. Our water and waste.
Yeah.
You can't bring in potable water tank. And.
No.
Temporary storage of waste, if it's a permanent structure.
Correct, because again, then you get into building code occupancy requirements, and because it's a commercial site where the public is invited in, I mean, we're even talking about ADA accessible. Um, so the, that's not something the town reviews, I mean, if you make. Sure, there are appropriate number of ADA parking spaces available, but I mean, when you look at site plans, it's it's limited, um, in in what we're reviewing here for the town. But you're correct, once. Once it's a permanent structure or a permanent restroom and utilities are hooked up, and it's a commercial site where the public is invited, those occupancy requirements tick in. And. Answer your question, yes.
Sorry, I believe the last meeting, I was the one that interrupted you as well, I finished that by the. We didn't interrupt you again.
My re relocatable bill. Would not necessarily trigger those. A relocatable wouldn't be considered permanent if it were anchored. That's, you know, because. Someone who's just thinking, I. Yeah, there's three food trucks. Um. Would that support building this permanent restroom structure? Uh, with that. Concrete. Brick, whatever. Um. Versus if you could get. And they haven't fair, they haven't. Um, Apple Festival, but they would have to be anchored. And have. Uh. Utilities, some charities there. But. Is that? Is that something someone would consider for food truck? Park or. Whether that be acceptable or would it have to be? Something like one of the restroom facilities. Made smaller, but.
Be the word permanent structure trigger other things than what you're talking about.
Right, okay, so permanent structure, something will be there forever. Does it really need to be a permanent structure? Or at least a. I don't know, for food truck park. Have three food trucks parked. Is indeed.
Well, whether it's worth it or not financially isn't really. Our problem.
And and that's true, that's not our problem.
But, you know, one of the things Sherry said at the end of the last meeting was talk to people.
Hmm.
And I didn't find a single person who wants a food truck park or. I I I don't want it to be too attractive, because that's not what I was.
I'm willing to put it this way. If you don't have. You need to have a phone, you know, food facility. Had a for work or wish. It's the. I mean, we have. There's a lot of fraud and. Totally like, fuck it, no, so, yeah. Like you said. I love food trucks. Unfortunately. And all of them are beautiful. We do them, we all them, we do them. I feel. Really unfair, I can. People who. We need brain with some nice trucks. Yeah. I don't know, I mean, I'm gonna be there, we're gonna be all these pretty trucks. So I mean. Thank you, not already. Naturally, we're gonna blow us over, right? And I'm not gonna be here, really, for the restaurant, I mean, who's that building over? And if we now have two or three. So true. You know, the rest. Really. That's really. Other than you do. If you do, or must go there, really building, but you didn't ask them to go out and.
That's a good point. Go ahead.
So this ordinance has two definitions in. Think, published ones. One is. Two, three, uh. Yeah, one, two, food trucks. If you want more than that, we gotta have a food park.
And it has become a primary.
Is there any way, for any reason, we can't just strike? That entire next section and just say. Food trucks will be allowed one or two, first time. Why, why do we even have to consider? An ordinance. An ordinance modification for food itself. I guess this.
You, um. You don't have to, I mean, again, if if it's the planning board's pleasure to to strike food park from the ordinance, I mean, by by all means, you know. You have the authority to make that recommendation and to present, have me present that to council.
Next year down the road, somebody says, how long spend a million dollars for the food shop today? Could they come and apply? To do that and we can. Take it up then when it runs actually with. Something that cannot. Fly in the sky.
If it's not. So. Hold on, let me think, so. Again, if if the planning board wants to strike if they can, the reason it's being presented as it is, that's the direction staff proceeds from council. But yes, if it were struck and if council were to adopt the ordinance with no food park standard. Then, I mean, really, the per. Staff permitting would be based on what's in the code, which would just be reviewing. Food truck permits, you know, one at a time for commercial properties up to two per property. Um, and and then if someone. And then, um, and again, that would mean no food trucks of any kind on a vacant parcel or a property with no established use. So if someone were to come down the road. Um. I mean, we'd have, we'd have to modify the code again.
The word accessory is in there right now, right? As an accessory.
Yeah, and I added that specifically for the clarity, because that that is specifically what I felt was lacking from staff.
Well, there's an easy workaround, if you don't have that in there, you gotta divide a parcel, a vacant parcel into four parcels. You have that a major subdivision, now you've got four parcels, select, select two on each one, if you wanted to.
If you have an established use though, you would have to establish a.
Right, if you don't, if he as an accessory prevents that.
What, what's your hypothetical again?
The hypothetical is, I'm like, I'm trying to think, what would someone do to work around this? Say they wanted. That eight, those eight, we just struck the the park immediately, but they still wanted eight or six.
Hmm.
They had a vacant parcel. We we changed it to only two per parcel, regardless of access, whether it's accessory or not.
Hmm.
What if they didn't divide that parcel?
Um.
Put two on each of those parcels.
They would still, the food trucks would still have to be an accessory used for an existing commercial use, so each of those parcels, if subdivided, would have to have their own established commercialness with an existing business, and and then, yes, in theory, two food trucks could be on each. One and a half.
That's why I don't want to remove that language.
Yeah, if if staff, and again, that's if staff felt. The food trucks didn't interfere with the functioning of the businesses of the site.
So, um.
Go ahead.
So that was the question, is this, and I'm starting to strike throughs, uh, is is that as an accessory, something you're suggesting we add? And, uh. Top third of page three under temporary vendor locations.
Yeah.
As an accessory is something that.
If it's if it's underlined, that's something that's added language.
Good start, that's what I'm. So leaving it that way prevents my little workaround that I just, okay, good, alright.
So I think, I'm sorry.
Oh.
I was gonna suggest, because we're jumping all over the place, and we're jumping from this part to this part of this. Let's. Go to the end of the definitions of this. The remark, and let's go through it part by part. And see if we agree with the changes. If there's anything additional we'd like to add, that just makes sense to me, so we don't jump. From top to bottom and back and forth, and we can make some actual progress through, isn't maybe give you it tonight. So. If you will, look with me on, I think it's attachment A. It's, um, where this one 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 point zero zero three definitions. You should have a copy that is black with. Red mark throughs and blue changes. Everybody got that?
Good definition.
Yes, we're gonna start with definitions, everybody got that? I'll make sure I, okay. So the first change that we see is under the definition for food park. The change has been a designated area where rather than two is being changed to three. To eight, so that's redefining. Food park, making it. Anywhere from three uh to eight. Is anyone opposed to making that change?
Oh, Jim. Really, food park.
You bet.
I stay with the great food park.
Okay, so Jim thinks we should get rid of the food park entirely.
I agree.
We've got an agreement, and I'm gonna play devil's advocate, and this is why.
Okay.
We already have that in this ordinance. That was the direction that was given to us when we initially were told to develop this ordinance. While it seems like there's no one that you guys have talked to that was certainly interested in a food truck park, that's great. But it's down the line, someone came up and said, oh, I've got this, we've already got language there, we don't have to go back and revisit this issue again. It's already. There. And it's really not, if nobody right now really is interested in it, it's really not going to affect us more than the other. You know what I mean? But why get rid of something just because? I don't think having it in there is going to invite someone to have the collateral to come in and put down to develop.
Especially if it requires there for the.
We're gonna get to, we're gonna get to, we get that.
If we have.
Right, that's that's what we'll get to, I just, that's why I don't want to strike this right now, because we'll get to that.
And if if I am tied on to the end of that, what I was gonna say before, but my understanding is that the food park. Standards. Were put in to prevent. Standalone food truck development of a vacant parcel. And from an ordinance point of view, the town is actually in a stronger position. To have standards defined in the ordinance, even. If the public or if a developer or potential applicant could see them as financially infeasible or burdensome. Um, having those standards puts the town in a stronger position. Than not having anything. Um, there there is the possibility, and I didn't discuss this before when the question was asked. Um, that by not having key part of. Designated defined and having requirements in the ordinance, it it can actually open the door. Um. For someone to apply for something. Because it's not technically regulated by the town. So. Those food.
Yeah. Because, and that's why we're trying, we're we're gonna get there, we're gonna get there. Okay, so, and I I am, I'm just gonna move through each of these food stamps, I believe it as is, unless someone says anything different right now. Food trailer, and there's there's a couple of things that I would like to address here, and there's a reason for that, so bear with me. Food trailer says a mobile food business units that can be hitched and towed by a vehicle. Does there need to be anything that says a singular unit?
Single trailer.
Single trailer.
That's at the pleasure of the board, all the words there are singular, so I mean.
And that's, and that's why I'm asking, because I, and that's the way I read it, and and I'm asking because there is a.
Got it.
Food truck in town that's made up of about four or five units.
Hmm.
And I want to make sure that we're very clear. On what that means, and it can be appropriately regulated one way or the other. Some properties would certainly be able to accommodate that, but some would not. I know that there is another single food truck that is purchasing another one because they're growing. So. I just want to make sure that we're well defined and people understand what that means.
It's it's easy.
To me, when you say a. A mobile food business unit, that means one. And when you say in the next one, a mobile vehicle, that's one. To me, that's. That's defined, and if if everyone thinks that's well enough and that it can then be enforced. That way. Then that's great. What does anybody?
Enforced comment aside, I agree with you, Chris.
Yeah, I agree, I think.
That language is.
It implies it, but sometimes you have to be more than why. Thank you.
A lot of these staff's responsibilities anyway, I mean, they do this.
Interpret it.
Hmm.
Well, yeah. And we have like.
Of course, yeah, and and my interpretation for those two. Would be saying that is. Designating it as singular, but again. For clarity, if the board would like, it's very easy to just. Insert. The word singular in both those, a singular mobile food business unit or a singular mobile vehicle. But that's completely up to the board.
Nice, and for the truck. I want to ask, we might consider. That is capable of moving under its own power. Hmm. Because, um.
I was thinking that.
You know, food truck. Would you say that, you know, that it means it can move, I I don't know, I mean, I'm not. I think Asheville, they talked about. Having to move the trucks out at night and back during day, I'm not suggesting that here. But that was one of the conversations that I was part of over there. And uh listened in on. Um. So, and the food truck implies. That it's got a tag. And it's, you know, current registration. And that. It can be moved.
Fifty five thirty. Well, they register. Register.
You know, if it's sitting there with a tire swab. That may. I don't know, maybe something that would cost us. Is is a truck, or is it? Here, I don't know that.
You know, when you say food trailer, and you say food truck, we basically are talking about.
Well, a trainer's tone.
But we keep referring to all of these types of things. Um, I don't think we have. These food trucks. That in real world. If you want a. A truck. We've got more trucks.
Well, the, um. Skewered, what is, the best thing.
One.
That. The best thing is this unskewered, that sometimes is. The sign eyes is.
Yeah.
Dragable.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Or.
It's like.
It's correct.
Um. It's gonna be good.
I mean.
It can, they knew that they want, they're gonna be able to, you know.
Right, and and it says.
Yeah, let's do it.
Now, I'm not saying it should have to.
No.
Not that they, we would have to, alright, move your truck, I wanna make sure it'll move, move it ten feet, okay, move it back, okay, you pass, I'm not saying that we have to do that in the arm of the. Enforcement of this. Just that. To me, a food truck, a mobile vehicle supporting the food business. Implies that it is mobile. Anyone. Hmm, just that moving spell out. Is it good as it is?
Or aren't we?
Are we open, thank you, hey?
Which we could be.
I'm an engineer. I was making two meetings, going as my life.
I think since we've talked about this. And we are in agreement, and staff is in agreement that the word unit and the word vehicle.
Code.
Is what the sub is finally telling me that we can leave that as it is. And I think the mobile vehicle, I think we all understand what that is case, but I wouldn't really be pushing into not have one that's driveable. So let's just move on, keep on doing them. We'll leave those as they are since we clarified that. Temporary vendor, anybody feeling anything needs to be changed there or temporary vendor site? No comments of any of those. Okay. Um, there were no changes under the vendor registration. Operations lays out the hours of operation. Um. Private property talks about right of way and not blocking street access or sidewalk area. Under the next change that we see is number three, where we simply inserted that they are responsible for proper disposal of solid waste, wastewater and trash. So it's just been a little bit of a clarification um, there and I trust the one person who she was adding those words in there.
Solid waste as a definition.
No, no, it does not. But the the word that was only there before was was waste.
It just said disposed of waste and trash. So he's there for solid waste.
And many, many food trucks do use like gray water tank systems. So I I just felt having something about wastewater specifically is important to make sure those units are pumped out appropriately. Um, and that's being disposed of and not like dumped down the storm thing.
We're no changes in number four. Excuse me. Um, I do have a question about number five and just a clarification again, because this is something that I'm seeing. Um. That seems to be in all the decisions it is where it talks about um, advertising and signage is limited to what is um, displayed on the vendor truck or trailer. So you know, you can have a sign of the name of your business on the truck or trailer. If there's any other signage, it has to be a permitted sign. Am I reading that correct?
Hmm. Not a sandwich board.
Not a sandwich board, not a temporary sign because it's in any permitted signs on the side of operation. Is that correct?
Sorry.
Okay, so temporary signs, sandwich boards stuck around are not appropriate or not allowed by this.
We do have uh you know, temporary signed permits and temporary signed permit requirements. So again, in theory.
Thirty days, right?
Uh, I don't know how like that, but there's limitations on the number per site and the the time of display.
Went to the next page. No changes in six, seven and eight unless anybody noticed something that they want to check. So here's where we get to the biggest amount of changes. Temporary vendors shall be permitted based on the following conditions. And here's the language change, language change. One to two food trucks or trailers by a single property or temporary vendor site as an accessory use under a commercial zoning component. So this is where there already has to be an existing commercial use. In which we have one or two food trucks there. And it does give an example. Um, a property with an existing principal commercial use may post one or two, that is a change for single temporary vendors at a given time. And they can change as often as desired. Um. Kind of going along with what I mentioned about the units of a food truck. I would like for one A to to have the same language as two A, the example. So one A would instead read, instead of two great vendors, temporary food trucks or trailers, which is what two A also says. If you have a vendor that has multiple trailers, and then they look at that example and think they can read and watch. Right, so their trailers.
Yes. So you're asking just to change temporary vendors and one A to food trucks or trailers?
Yes.
Okay.
Is the amount of posting any more change?
That's good. Good change.
And the word commercial was added, I'm sorry, the word commercial was added in uh well, both of these act. Between principal use, principal and the word use.
Yes.
So that was intentional. Very. Probably the challenge.
So this is the example dollar general, but you consider it a commercial property that could keep what's on there. Most things pretty dry. He doesn't want to be a food or a food establishment. Okay.
Okay, so number two, um, A, number letter A, number two, food parks may be permitted only as a principal commercial use under a commercial zoning component subject to one 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 dot dot zero zero seven, food parks may not be permitted as an accessory use. So going back to that, it can only be the principal commercial use and that would certainly define where it can be located as well. Um, and then it gives the example of the vendor park with three to eight as a commercial use of the park. Do you have any attention to that? It goes into the special event information, which is unchanged. So we'll leave that as it is going down to letter B. Temporary vendor site shall only be designated in, and these changes are only putting in the um acronyms.
Correct, just the abbreviations for clarity.
So there's really no change to that. So let's go on to the next page because this is very wanting to um make that, I think, Jim, this your food parks. And since you prefer that it not be there, but we're gonna keep it.
Yeah.
And if you would like that there to say permanent structure. Is that correct regarding westerns?
Yes.
Permanent restaurant structure, permanent restroom and hand washing structure. So that would become this both registering and and washing would be the permanent structure.
Um. If I can suggest, um, would would the board be okay with um, if reading permanent restrooms and hand washing facilities shall be provided onsite within a permanent structure?
Planted on some.
Oh, sorry.
You just read, just add it to the end of the sentence with the N A.
As a.
Within a permanent structure.
Because I mean, they could have something else within that.
Yeah, and then that covers.
Structure to just.
Yeah, and and I'm also just thinking back hand washing facility where you had the thing with the pump outside. So again, if and if if the board would like to, that having it at the end just covers both those items.
Thinking you couldn't have digital use in that structure causing food truck park is the primary use. Would there be secondary uses allowed? I'm just throwing it out there. What if?
That's where my mind just went.
So what if you've got a permanent structure with restaurants and washing facilities? And um, concession stands, that mean? Yeah, is that? Yeah, bandings. Yeah, cat splatters.
I want to catch this.
Yeah.
Now, if they're temporary vendors, you know, selling out of sand or something like that, as long as they're permitted. You know, it.
Because the food truck park has become the priority.
And you can have secondary uses would be allowed.
Just like any other commercial business, they do allow it accessories. Right?
Some secondary use, section, yeah.
It's not defined. The finance. Um.
We can get deep into this.
Hmm. I mean, there's no, you know, but I I'm bound to what's written in the code and and I'm just thinking through it. There there's nothing in the ordinance that would prevent um an accessory use specifically for a principal use of food park. Um, I would be bound, you know, to look at the zoning district standards and the permitted uses to see what accessory uses would even be allowed if it were a food park in the neighborhood commercial district. Since we were just looking at those uses with the rezoning, you know, it's very limiting in terms of the accessory use is allowed in neighborhood commercial. But when you get into general business, um, it is a little bit more extensive. Um, but.
But that's not going to change regardless of the language that we found is just a time.
Right.
There's there's a difference in saying that three to eight food trucks is the primary use versus the sole use. And you know, if if seemingly legal to say that would be the sole use at a property. Um, but that's that would be would be for food trucks. That's right. Or trailers, but then if there's an accessory use that would fit within that, that would be allowed. So when you build your permanent restroom facility, it's not having a room with a rower that would that be allowed in the restroom and hand washing facilities? There's a lot.
Michael's looking something up.
All we, all we can really do is reasonable and we can't run any of that, but.
Yeah, I mean, I I think we can, and and that's, that's why this is an evolving thing, you know, the first shot we took in this whole ordinance, we did the best we could with what we had. And then as come back and there's been things that have been brought up, let's tweak it, you know, and that's all. Continue to do that, but I think that might be an outlier at this point, you know? They tried to think about that. I think if we just go with this particularly since they're wanting to be nice, all the things you want to do is a disinterest in food. Park anyway, and that I think if we just have on there that the the restaurants have hand washing facilities and being within a permanent structure, that's going to do what we need it to do at this point in time. And we can just hold in pain against all this pandemic stuff. It's all, we'll get some brick and mortar restaurants. We would love to have that.
I I was incorrect. It's it's actually only the light industrial district, which has more extensive list of secondary uses. Um, general business just states customary access, accessory uses and structures when located on the same zoning lot as the principal structure excluding open storage. And accessory use is defined as a use customarily incidental and subordinate to a principal use or building on the same lot as the principal use of a building.
So it kind of has to be related.
For yeah. With the hypothetical of an accessory use for a food park, it would it would need to be related because it would need to be considered a customary accessory use to a food park.
So. Big Max T-shirts. I mean. Any additional changes that you see in the section of food parks?
I think section of sub three says one common side on sign that a friend eats with sites.
Yes, so that means there's like one sign now, I'm putting this sign that that lists the ones that are located the names of the trucks that would be
That's if I'm right with. That's not separate.
It is. Um, uh, sign permits are always done separately after many development approval. So this is, this is just saying that a food park like any, and again, it's more clarifying a food park like any other principal commercial use is allowed one time.
Okay.
So every food truck, we get to up there.
Yeah. Our our side ordinance, if we're not talking about a food park, you know, allows uh, one site per road, fun and that thing. Uh, so that that's pretty much that.
Anything else?
No.
I think it's good work.
Adapt and change and try and do better every time, right?
Hmm.
Okay, so. Yeah, this is, this is it to us. So we are. So what we are going to do tonight, this will be done here. Um, I'm assuming we are going to recommend an approval with modifications. So it's going to be approved with the modifications that we have mentioned tonight. Do we need to specify those in the motion?
I I have them written down, so I mean, um, and and I I believe I've read them into the record, both of them, because I mean, you could say as modifications as.
As discussed, okay.
So then, then plus plus what you said about changing, what was it, A one, A a language from vendors to trucks and trailers, that would also and then the permanent
Correct.
within the permanent structure, that would be at those.
Right, all this seems to be changes before. Any additional discussion? Would anyone like to um give us a motion? Well, I recommend I'm making motion that we um, recommend to town council with the modifications that have been added by staff in this meeting. Um. Approval of T X T dash twenty two dash over three. Um, and we find that it is consistent with element one of the making of the river twenty forty companies in plan, including rejecting one point four and the gentleman's in bold six.
Also say. Just second.
After more, let's say that we have. Any additional discussion? On paper, aye?
Aye.
And that motion does it. We didn't. So now we are to additional items for the season. Do we have any additional items from staff updates, announcements?
Um, nothing tonight. We're um, conducting interviews for the planning technician position. So again, uh, the application is still open. So for any candidates out there, um, feel free to submit your application. Um, but we are conducting interviews and open the rap council section, but no other kids to me.
I think we're expecting to have any planning board member coming to the next. So that covers every item except number nine. Mr. Foster has made a motion to adjourn. Do I get a second?
Awesome.
A second for Mr. Austin on paper. It was, I knew there were none. Very much in this complete term.